We're gonna have to compare screens.
Oh, there it is. Never mind. It just showed up. But there's nothing clickable on there.
Where are you?
See, that's what I'm saying. There's nothing there.
And you're not. What are you doing?
I'm here inside of work.
Do it right, guys.
Do it a different way is what you're saying.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to July 14th Jocky School Board Meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Berg.
Here, kinda.
Bauer Miss.
Yes, ma'am.
Allen.
Here.
McKeon.
Hello.
Swanson.
Good evening.
Tucker.
Here.
And Romansky.
Here. We'll move to Item 3, Recognition of Visitors to the Board Meeting. Is there anyone wishing to address us on an item not on this evening's agenda? If not, we'll go to Item 4, which is the consideration of agendas presented with additions. We have two additions to the personnel items, 1.1, which is 5.14 and 5.15. They're sitting at our desk. Do you want to explain it?
These were higher as of today, so Megan Miller got her change that's on this consent agenda is a change from the 220 contract to the 260 contract. And then the new employee who just interviewed and accepted today, Michelle, she'll be taking Julie Mendon's former position of Special Services Supervisor, but it's a 220-day contract. And because we don't meet again until the 25th of August, we wanted to make sure those got on the agenda today because Michelle is coming from New Haven, so it gives her a chance to get to get gives them a chance to get someone hired over there as well. So would offer up those changes to the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Vintor. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Then we'll move to Item 5, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I have a question that I asked Dr. Bezek to address, an element in the consent relative to the handbooks. And if you looked at the high school changes, there was something that said something about removal of pledgeable agents. And I think there was some confusion in that, and I would ask John to come in.
As soon as I read what you pointed that out to me, I went, oh, okay. I figured I would draw attention. They're not removing the pledgeable agents actually. They're gonna make sure they sit. The pledgeable agents are set the first day of every week during announcements. They will continue to be that way. They were just trying to clean up some of their handbook when they took out a piece about the pledgement. Didn't really need to be in the handbook, so the pledge is not being removed. It should've been articulated a little better in the change sheet that we made. Got it? Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Another question just above there where it said it was removing the pledgeable agents. They talked about removing parent advisory teams. Do you know what that was?
I'll have to follow up. Our time's up.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor of consent, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion will stand approved. We're going to be jumping around a little bit because of people's schedules, and we're gonna go all the way to 9.1, the new business action items, which is the policy 514, bullying policy review.
Sounds good. I'll tee this up. I'm gonna ask Peter Martin to come up front. He's our attorney from Knutson Flynn and Dean, but he also is our resident expert on the bullying prohibition policy. You've probably seen this past year. There's a lot of talk at the legislature about the changes in the proposed legislative changes about the bullying policy and some concerns that it didn't go far enough, some worried that it might go too far with the new legal changes. Well, they finally came to agreement after two years of discussion, and now MSBA was charged with updating their policy. And we were lucky that Peter, who works with us, also authored the changes in the policy, so we asked him to come in, and we're also gonna be-
I was one of the lawyers that did.
We're also gonna be having Peter come and talk to our building administrators on July 29th. He's actually gonna spend the day here going through this policy and other policies that we want our administrators to know. And you're also helping present at the MSBA on the policy as well, so.
Yes, correct, at the summer session.
So without further ado, I'm gonna let him kinda talk about some of the important changes, and we figured that we set aside some time for questions as well, so we figured some of the board members may have questions about this policy. John said a few boards have had some questions about this.
Yes, indeed. More to come, I'm guessing, too. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I know, I looked at your preliminary agenda before I came out here, and I know it's pretty full, so I could actually spend quite a bit of time talking about the Safe and Supportive Minnesota Schools Act. But I hope to just provide you a brief overview, and I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have in the short time that we have. Obviously, this legislation was signed into law April 9 by Governor Dayton. It was an effort that was years in the banking, I think, for certainly the last four or five years our state law. We had a previous state law that addressed bullying in the state of Minnesota, and it was a much criticized law in some quarters because of its brevity, 27 words. But those 27 words did require that districts adopt a policy that addressed bullying and intimidation of students. Most districts adopted the original MSBA model policy on bullying, which our office prepared and which this district adopted, it looks like, back in 2006, and amended in 2009. That is the, it was a fairly comprehensive policy, and that's what a lot of districts operated under for a long time. Well, as a result of some high-profile and very unfortunate situations involving districts here in Minnesota, there was a lot of political pressure brought to bear to come up with a comprehensive version of the statute that addressed more issues with respect to bullying and cyberbullying. And so, over a period of time, politicians came together and prepared this statute. The early version of this from last legislative session in 2013 was a lot more prescriptive, actually, in many respects than the current state law. And as a result, I think it, under legislative parlay, it's died on the table. And so, it was through efforts of MSBA and others, was substantially revised, and an improved version was put in front of the legislature, and it was passed. So what does this new law do? It was passed and signed by the governor in 2014, in April of 2014. In a nutshell, it does a number of things. It repeals, first of all, the statute that I was just talking about, those 27-word statute that required us to have districts to have a policy on bullying and intimidation. It replaces those 27 words with a much more lengthy statute that contains some very prescriptive The law generally requires districts to either adopt a local policy or to adopt the state model policy on bullying. And when do you need to do this by? The statute says that the law becomes effective for the 2014-2015 school year, so that's just around the corner. So there's a fair amount of work that districts need to do to prepare to undertake these requirements under the law by the beginning of the school year. So you can adopt a local policy, you can adopt the state model policy. That's what districts are required to do under the new law. At 5:20 PM this afternoon, or as of that time, the state of Minnesota had not yet adopted a state model policy. I checked their website. I've been checking regularly. There is no state model policy right now. However, the Minnesota School Boards Association, through our office, has prepared a revised bullying policy that tracks substantially with the state statute, and it has been disseminated, I believe, or made available through the MSBA to school districts, and school districts are in the process of adopting it now. That policy tracks, in every respect, the requirements of the law, the new law. The only deviation of any material significance is that the new statute is designed to address student-to-student bullying. This policy also extends protection or addresses situations where a student is bullying a staff member. And we, it was a requirement that we had in an earlier version of the policy that we thought would be appropriate to continue, but otherwise it tracks the state statute. So, in addition to adopting a model policy, districts are required to inform parents and students in the course of your annual notification of your student discipline policy. You're supposed to notify parents and students of their rights and obligations under the Safe and Supportive Minnesota Schools Act. And so, and that's effective also at the beginning of this school year, so to the extent there is a dissemination of discipline policies or to provide notice to your students and families of what your expectations are from the behavior standpoint, you're supposed to notify them of those requirements. The Act applies to instances or events and occurrences in school buildings. It applies in school activities, on transportation, and in other settings where cyberbullying might be involved. For example, if you're engaging in an act of cyberbullying even in your own home, but it has a substantial adverse effect on a student's performance, for example, in the school setting. In other words, what we lawyers like to call, if there's an educational nexus between what is going on off-campus and there's a connection on-campus, you can take disciplinary action or other action to address that. That's the scope of the law. So it's relatively broad. The district policy must establish research-based, developmentally-appropriate best practices to address bullying, and I believe the district is, have been engaged in that effort and will continue to do so. The policy or summary must be posted conspicuously in your administrative offices at all of your school buildings and at the district office. It must be given to each employee. There is a training requirement for staff. New staff need to be trained on it. When they become employed, everybody else needs to be trained at least once every three years on the law. And in terms of how to operate, how it's operationalized at the building level is you need to designate a staff member. In our policy, designates the principal or the building principal or the principals designate as the official report taker for bullying, and that person is responsible for investigating and following through on reports of bullying. And prompt action is mandated by the statute. So, that's it, in a summary of what those requirements are. But we have a lot of work to do in a short period of time to operationalize this law. So I will be working closely, and other people from my office will be working closely with Dr. Thompson and Dr. Bezek and the administration to implement the policy and to get an infrastructure developed for the school setting here going forward.
Questions?
Peter, thank you for being with us tonight, and thank you for the Yoma's effort trying to construct something like this with your colleagues. I will apologize upfront. I have a number of questions. They're mostly interpretive in nature, so you'll help me understand or my colleagues understand. I'm gonna start right with Section 2A, where, and I'm picking up on something you said. My interpretation of about six lines down where it says, "This policy also applies to any student whose conduct at any time or in any place constitutes..." It sounds to me like there's no geographic boundaries to this whatsoever. As long as you can make that educational nexus and there's a bullying activity, that constitutes bullying under this policy.
Yeah, and I think that that is a, really, a reflection of common law, you know, it's school law, generally speaking, even as it generically applies, like First Amendment issues, student expression that causes a disruption in a school setting can be addressed and regulated by the school district. And so, it is kind of a reflection of a relatively established practice of using the nexus doctrine in the schools, going even way back to just generic student discipline cases where there was a Court of Appeals case some years ago that our office litigated, where an incident occurred at a bus stop, and the Court of Appeals recognized that nexus connection in that context. So the answer is yes. That nexus concept is recognized in the statute, and it's really a continuation of what has been recognized in prior case law.
Reggie, do you mind if I-
Oh, please do.
So I would assume, then, that there was just that recent court ruling in New York where they ruled that they did not have that nexus, and they ruled that the school district had violated the student's First Amendment. Is that correct? Is that what was really at issue there?
Yes. I'm not intimately familiar with the facts, but that, in that case, the appellate court did find that the district had violated the rights, the First Amendment rights of the, of the student. And I will tell you that that is, you know, that was an issue that was front and center with the legislature here, because in some respects, you know, what constitutes bullying? I made the comment the other day when I was meeting with Dr. Bezek and his staff that, you know, what is bullying? How do we, how do we recognize it? And I sort of analogized to a famous quote by Justice Potter Stewart when he had, they had a pornography case before them, and he said, "I can't define obscenity, but I know it when I see it." And in this situation, you know, bullying could be name-calling. It could be, somebody could take it as an instance of bullying, but it could be viewed potentially as an expression of opinion. It's a wide-open landscape, and you need to be careful about how you approach it. The statute defines bullying as intimidating, threatening, abusive, or harming conduct that is objectively offensive. So I take it that the legislature, you know, was hoping to create a little bit of objectivity, less subjectivity in these types of assessments, and went so far as to say, at the end of the statute, that it did not intend to, by passing this law, did not intend to abridge upon First Amendment rights. It says it right in the statute. But I think that there certainly could be a situation where that could occur, and so I guess we just need to remind ourselves that bullying under this law needs to be something that, as the statute says, is objectively offensive. Now, in my judgment, that even has potential subjectivity, but, because one person's objectively offensive as another person's subjective, you know, acceptable practice. So, you know, we need to, it just emphasizes the importance of having training and having your experienced administrators share their stories and work with your younger administrators. You know, I think, I always try to tell people, apply a healthy dose of common sense when you're trying to implement this law.
We talked about the power of having all of our administrative staff together talking about these things so that we're on the same page. It's just having that building account understand, especially with the new people we have coming on.
So Peter, if I may continue. It's 2G. It's about the reporting. I just would like to understand, in the legislative notes, or perhaps there's a definition I missed, what constitutes a report? Written, verbal, electronic? Is it something in passing? How is the reporter and/or the building leader supposed to know that that off-the-cuff comment by the child constitutes a report, because there's repercussions if you don't follow through other reports? So what constitutes a report?
Well, I would say that any report that the district reasonably concludes is an instance of bullying under the statute, so it would be something that is objectively offensive, that is involving intimidating, threatening, abusive behavior, where there's an actual or perceived imbalance of power, and that there's repeated instances of conduct, or if there is a material and substantial interference with the student's educational opportunities. That's a very high standard, in my judgment. So it's, I would say that a report is one that meets the statutory criteria. As I said, though, a minute ago, there is a little bit of elasticity to that concept, and, you know, people are gonna have to exercise some reasonable judgment. But I would say, I would take the approach that schools take when it comes to maltreatment of minors' reports. You err on the side of caution and file the report.
So must a report be firsthand, or can it be second or third-hand? Must a report be firsthand, or can it be second or third?
It can be a second-hand report. It can even be an anonymous report under the statute, and you just can't realize exclusively, for example, on anonymous reporting, but it could be second or third-hand, but you have a duty to investigate. And I'll just say, too, by the way, parenthetically, that depending upon the allegations that are involved, it could be a violation or a potential violation of some other law, like Title IX, and laws like that have imposed a duty upon recipients of federal financial assistance, like this school district, to investigate those. So there may be a combination effect in terms of the obligation to investigate. So yeah, you can get those reports firsthand, secondhand, but then you need to investigate, and indeed the statute requires that.
Well, okay, again, maybe you point me to it, but that was my next question, which is, is there a duty to investigate anonymous reports? It talked about anonymous reports cannot be solely relied upon for disciplinary action. Must all anonymous reports be investigated?
If, in my judgment, if the anonymous report is a report that, if true, would constitute bullying or cyberbullying or prohibited conduct under the statute, and that includes, by the way, retaliatory conduct for making a report, then I think you have a duty to investigate.
If I skip ahead to Section 5A, it talks about the, this is the immediacy of action, and it talks about within three days of receiving a complaint, just a real simple thing. Are we talking business days, calendar days? So this comes in on Friday. Does the school have to act over the weekend or by the Monday on Section 5A? School district action?
Are you in subdivision 5?
I'm in Section B, 5A.
School district action. 514-6.
Page 6.
5A, the first, just the three days. Is it business or calendar? Because the D is the district having to implement this. If something came in on Friday afternoon, what's our end? Is it a holiday or whatever? I mean, what's this? How are we supposed to interpret?
Yeah, the statute talks about, I think the three-day time period is in the statute. I'm just trying to remember. I believe it just says three days.
So it's open to us to act reasonably?
Well, typically, in the legislative, there's a body of statutes, statutory interpretation statutes, and I think in there it says, unless the legislature states otherwise, they're considered to be calendar days.
I think in our policy and the definitions, for a day, we have it as a business, regular business day. Under the grant, you know, all the definitions and the policies, we find we look at the protocol, define a day as a business day.
Well, that's kind of what I'm getting at, because obviously we have to act within a three-day window, and if it's calendar days, then that would shorten the window.
There's spring break, whatever, you could be-
Any number of things, yeah.
Right.
Well, it's just something I'm curious.
Yeah, and I know, I'm looking, for some reason, I'm struggling to find the language in the statute. I know it's around here somewhere. I'm just having a hard time.
We can come back to this. So let me move to C in that same section. This is talking about the perpetrator, alleged perpetrator has an opportunity to present a defense. Who is the defense to?
It would be the investigator, and you're the administrator, who is, for example, contemplating some kind of consequence, or, as they say in the statute, a remedial response.
Right.
And indeed, if you are, for example, contemplating disciplinary action, even something like a suspension, not even expulsion, you're required, anyway, by case law, the case from years ago called Gossi-Lopez, where you have to meet with the student and essentially get the student's side of the story. And I think, I view the defense, allow them the opportunity to present a defense, as basically your Gossi-Lopez interaction with the student.
I think what I'm getting at is that if the investigator is the person that is going to merit out or meet out the punishment, if you will, you're also making the defense to the same person who's kind of serving as investigator and judge. So I'm kind of asking an unspoken question, which is, is there an opportunity for the alleged perpetrator to make a defense to someone other than the investigator? Can they appeal it in some fashion?
Can I, in practice, I've been a building administrator. That's why I would always set up when I was building principal. The APs would, if they were, you know, usually dealing with student contact, then the appeals went to building principal, and, you know, if people don't like what the building principal do, they would probably appeal that to me. So I would say that I would interpret that as, yes, there is an opportunity to always, you know, make an appeal.
Well, I don't think, I guess my point is, I don't see it saying that, but by practice, you're saying, we may choose to allow for those multi-load-
Definitely.
Yeah, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe, like, certainly for expulsions, but I believe also for suspensions in the Minnesota People Fair Dismissal Act, you can have those addressed.
Right.
By a higher-level administrator.
Well, as I say, I don't think, personally, now I'm speaking opinion now, I don't think we have a choice. State law has mandated that we can't accept our current policy. We can't go with 27 words. It's gonna have to be something that captures the elements of this. I have some reservations, have all along, as I've tracked this, but I think we will have to adapt and adopt to what the policy, at least the MSBA, who's done a great job in helping us as districts. So you don't have a multitude of districts all trying to create the law. That's why I applaud and appreciate, and I also appreciate you answering the questions, but I remain puzzled a little bit in terms of how this is gonna be implemented over time, and I think time will prove that out one way or the other in terms of what, this needs a little more clarity, or if not, this was pretty simple.
Yeah, I mean, I do, I, in addition to my other duties, I do lobbying work for the Minnesota School Boards Association from time to time. And one of the things that, when I'm working at the Capitol, that I try to tell legislators and indeed other lobbyists who have opinions about how the law should be crafted is, I ask them, how is a, how is a school official going to know? You're writing statutes that you expect school officials to operationalize. So, and I could provide you with a number of examples where, you know, people write the statute and the school people scratch their heads. So, yeah, I, as a general concept, I agree with you. The law should be written so that it can be feasibly and practicably operationalized by school districts while still accomplishing the public policy objectives.
Any other questions?
I said one, and it is under Section 4, on whom has to report, to whom they have to report. In practice, it's happened with the disciplinary procedure, but it's not unusual for the person to report secondhand, usually through the parent, and the parent coming to the person they feel the most comfortable with. They're not necessarily gonna go to the building principal, or maybe they've already got a problem with that principal. They may come to a board member. And it's foresee that happening with this policy even more so, you know, where they then want you to also hold that in confidentiality, but bring it forward for disciplinary procedure. So how do you handle something like that? And does that mean that maybe the board members here should also get some training on this policy?
Is your question, what would be the proper thing to do if a board member received a report?
Mm-hmm. That's part of it.
Of an incident occurring involving a student? I mean, I would say that you would obviously notify the superintendent, who would then, I'm sure, notify the proper building staff, and then at some level, you would just engage the parent and say, "Thank you for your response. I'm forwarding on your report to the administrative team for handling, and I invite you to contact Dr. Thompson, Dr. Bezek, or your building principal if you have further concerns. If something happens that you're concerned about, please contact your building principal immediately, you know, by email or whatever." I would probably take that approach.
Which I would, too, but sometimes they would say, "Well, I don't want to get involved, and I'm afraid that's gonna come back and hurt my kids," so.
Sure, and I think that there are ways to, I mean, you- Sure, and I think that there are ways to, I mean, you can take it, you can provide the information and, you know, the principals can, I think if they're smart, they'll do an investigation without necessarily identifying the reporter. I would guess that stuff like this probably happens from time to time, even outside the bullying context, where there's, somebody sees a fight, you know, involving, you know, gang members or whatever. And they report it, but they don't want to be identified. I would guess that administrators probably have the skill set, or should have the skill set, to deal with those situations.
Pierre, I was wondering, since this policy puts a huge onus on the school district to be mindful of Facebook, Instagram, all of these cyberbullying venues that students are using, do you foresee an increase in the number of lawsuits against school districts? Because they didn't know about this and they should have? Or you become more liable for some major things, everything from suicide to, you know, just a student coming home really upset to his parents? What type of thing, what's going to happen to school districts as a result of this?
Yeah, I think that's a really significant question you raise. I mean, ultimately, you know, when this law was passed, I think a lot of people felt, certainly the supporters of the law, felt a great relief. But the practical reality is, is that there will be, notwithstanding the implementation, the faithful implementation of this law, there is going to be incidents where, unfortunate incidents involving bullying and other things that are going to happen. The legislation itself says, you know, what happens if you don't comply with this law? The legislature said that it did not intend to create a private right of action under this statute. So you can't sue based upon the statute itself, but you can bring other claims. And I would say that in the near term, there could be more litigation as a result of a public attention being called to this policy. But I will tell you, I'm part of the National School Board Association Council of School Attorneys. I have friends of mine who are colleagues that, where they work with districts all across the country. And I will tell you that bullying, just generally speaking, bullying claims are prevalent everywhere. And so I think here in Minnesota, as a result of public attention that is being brought to this law, particularly because the requirements are going into effect now for this school year, I think people are going to be, there's going to be a heightened sensitivity to bullying issues, compliance with the law. So I think it's possible that there, in the near term, could be more lawsuits. But I will say that if you followed the law, particularly with regard to training and being proactive, and we're sort of, in a sense, legislating proactivity here by the schools, I would advise districts to be proactive regardless. So hopefully, there might be a greater inclination in the near term to bring a suit. But I also think that if district staff do what they need to do under the law, there may be a counter mitigating effect.
Because you talk about the nexus between, because there's a nexus with the school district, where you know that most of the students or most of the kids in this community know each other from school. So that nexus is pretty much going to be there just about every single time when a student in our district gets bullied. The chances of it not being a schoolmate or someone who went to school, especially in the same city, is pretty much zero?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I'm sure that there's people in this room and in the buildings that are concerned about, you know, what is bullying? You know, is it a claim of bullying? Is it really bullying? I had a situation, my daughter was in a summer camp two weeks ago. I told this story to John, that my daughter was, came home and said, somebody was bullying me. And I said, what are they doing? And it was a boy that was younger than her that was teasing her, that she claimed, he was saying that she was a boyfriend to, or a girlfriend to some other boy that she was in summer camp with, and she didn't like it. And I'm thinking, well, is that really bullying or not? But we made a report to the day camp provider, and whether it was bullying or not, we got a letter back. They're saying that they looked into the matter, they talked to the student, they assured us that it would not happen again. And I, as a parent, you think, I don't know if that was bullying or not, but I feel satisfied that they handled it. And so, and the same thing applies to situations in the school. If you're proactive, if you roll up your sleeves and you do the engagement with the students and communicate well with parents, I think you will stand yourself in good stead.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have one, actually two questions. Under the same section Reggie was referring to, under Section 5, School District Action, Item E was the, it now says E. It talks about that we're not able to disclose private educational or personal data. It also talks about notifying parents of either the targeted, you know, bully and/or the perpetrator. Example being, two kids are at the same bus stop, the parents are neighbors. There's a report of bullying, maybe it's even a third party, or one of the two kids reports it. Is the district allowed to, in the interest, where it makes sense to get the parents together to solution it? Are they allowed to say anything about, you know, does the victim's parents get to know who the perpetrators? If they know they're neighbors, what amount of proactive, reasonable information could be shared if something can be solutioned at home or in the neighborhood?
Sure, as a practical matter, in your hypothetical, people are going to know who the operatives are in that fact pattern. But notwithstanding that, the district has to be, because that is, private individuals aren't subject to the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, or FERPA, so the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. So we just need, notwithstanding that the parties might know each other and what's going on, and it's likely in many cases that they do. You need to be mindful of your obligations with regard to private educational data under the law. And you may not be able to be completely forthcoming as a result of data privacy concerns. Now, there are means, you know, if the parents consent to the disclosure, there may be the ability to share out information. But I think you have to take those situations on a case-by-case basis.
Anything else, Matt? Okay, this will be considered a first reading, we'll be having our second reading in the, at the end of August meeting. If anyone has anything, any other questions, just the free ones to run. Anything? Have Peter answer, if you have any other further questions after we even do it again? Thank you very much.
Thank you for being.
Now we're going to skip back to 6.4, under Old Business Discussion Items, which is a community ed elementary orchestra pilot. And Sean and Eric will be presenting tonight. Welcome.
Sure, our board had, based on the student survey results, what kids are interested in, students are interested in, one of the things that popped to the top was orchestra. And I met with Sean and Eric and asked if they would be interested in exploring and giving a proposal to the board on what a community ed pilot could look like, going to the experts for a plan. And so they're here tonight, and my hope is that after listening to their plan, that we give the go-ahead to community ed to work with Eric and Sean to have a pilot sometime during the 14, 15 school year.
I'm just going to paraphrase a little bit what's in front of you, so I don't want to read the whole thing. But essentially, this is just a chance for us to dip our toe in the water and see if it'll float a little bit. And so we're just looking at finding someone in the professional community who is an orchestra expert, who community ed can contract with or hire to come in and do a once-a-week program after school with elementary kids. And we can decide if we want to have fourth or fifth, or fourth and fifth involved. Younger grades, it seems the right place to do that, developmentally speaking, and that sort of thing. In terms of financial stuff, it'd be self-funded through community ed fees. That would pay for any costs, including the instructor, and any busing that might be involved. That's a detail that something else is on your agenda tonight, and I don't know what that's going to mean for this. I don't. So that's up to you. And instruments and instructional materials would actually be the direct cost to the parents and the families of the students involved. We would probably open up an open house night, like what we do for our curricular band program, invite three vendors, the music stores, to come in and allow parents to talk to them about what it means to rent to own an instrument and purchase an instruction method. And then we would get going with signing up online or through the community ed office. And just to kind of keep it reasonable, run it for six months out of nine months of the school year, probably.
I remember talking to you guys about, would this have a negative impact on the bands? And what's your feedback, or what would you want to tell the board about that?
At this point, the band program, we're already kind of busting at the seams a bit already in staffing and equipment. So we don't see it as a negative. One thing, as we've gone through the research in recent years, looking at student personalities and who gets involved in what, your typical band kid and your typical orchestra kid are very different students. And quite frankly, the typical orchestra kid, the profile they exhibit are the kids that are walking around. Say, I'm at the high school, Shockley High School, who are currently not involved in anything. They tend to be single-track kids. And so if we lose 5% of the band kids, the band staff is totally fine with that. Our goal is to get as many kids involved with our music programs as we can. And if we lose a little, but get a, if we lose five kids out of the band program and get 50 in the string program, for us, that's a good, that's a good bargain.
So, you know, we discussed it just kind of on a mile-high view, and we're still kind of hovering there. But are there any questions for these guys, or any other thing you'd want us to know? Otherwise, I would look for governance direction to go ahead and move forward with the community ed program.
Sean or Eric, I don't know who to direct it to, but is there any other support that the families, the parents, the kids really need for a program like this? In other words, they're going to be in this once-a-week training, but how about lessons and the other things that would operate around so that they're not learning everything in one time, three, you know, two-hour block once a week? Is that something that the staff can provide? Is that something we just say, you're on your own to find?
The program will probably be a combo of both individual and group work. So it may end up that if it becomes a two-night after-school, one of them is a rotation private thing, and then the second thing is a group thing. And that's kind of one of those things, as we bring a string expert in, how can that person work through community ed to make this work? It's kind of a pilot program.
I also think that it's easier to have group instruction in an orchestra setting because you have common instruments in the band setting. We're complicated with having flutes, clarinets, and everything else that are all different from each other. But if you have a room full of violins.
It's all the same technique.
It's all the same technique, always, so.
Couple basic questions. Could you just clarify, what kinds of instruments would be crossover? I mean, is there any low brass in the orchestra?
No.
So a typical.
All strings?
All strings.
Yes. A typical curricular orchestra program would be a string orchestra only through, say, high school. And then in a high school model, and we're talking way beyond this here, but then what orchestra teachers do is pull wind players, the brass and the woodwinds from a band program to augment the string orchestra for performances.
Then the second question would be, thanks for that. Is it, I know you're starting your band kids right now in fourth, in fifth grade. Is it possible to do both programs?
Conceivably.
Do you recommend they not try to at that young age, or do you not get too worried about that?
My answer to a parent would be, you know how good your kid is at organizing their time, and you know how busy they are, and that's a decision you'd have to make. It's pretty not committal, I know.
No, I just, you know, we know there's plenty of parents that have their kids in multiple sports. I mean, look at this as, as this, you know, spring versus fall. I know with music, a lot of times, we want to commit to one or the other and don't necessarily want to split hairs a lot, but I'm just curious if that's a factor out of the.
I would say the schools that do have both programs, it's fairly uncommon to have students in that age in both.
Can you tell us, what would be success? If you're, this is now four years later, where are we at? What are we headed towards? What have we seen?
I think the scope of what you have in front of you is pretty narrow in a lot of ways. It only includes those two grade levels as a possibility. If after we get through March and April, and we say to ourselves, wow, we've got a lot of kids involved, do we want to start extending the after-school program to later grades? Then we might want to take a timeout and say, do we want to just extend the after-school program? Or do we want to invest in a curricular program?
I guess what I'm getting at, and it probably wasn't clear, sorry, Sean, but if this first year is really good, what are we doing with the kids? Let's just say it's fifth grade, just to make it hard. What are we doing with the same kids who are in sixth grade the next year, and seventh grade the year after? How do we sustain that? Because if this is successful, theoretically, we're building a farm system, if you will, for you as a high school instructor now to have.
Well, not me.
Play anything.
I guess my answer is, I don't know. Because we haven't dug that deep yet. And you would have to make a decision about, about that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If this is good, we wouldn't want to cut it off.
But I would say by year three, we'd have to make the call. Do we keep doing this and put it into the schools? Or do we just say, we tried and that? So if we do it one year, it's successful, and maybe if it takes off like Gamebusters in year one, that gives us enough to say, okay, let's put it in the schools. If it's middle of the road, say, okay, let's start another segment of the community ed program, see what happens. Or if we do it one year and we've got five kids there and it kind of fizzles, then we kind of have our answer.
I think that participation would be one measure. From a sponsor's point of view, what does it sound like in May? You know, from a musician's point of view, that's what I'm going to be listening for, you know? From a parent and student point of view, do you feel your kid had a positive and enjoyable and full of learning experience? You know, that, those are all things that we would include in a survey of whether it was a success or not.
I have one question.
Sure.
Is there going to be a way to communicate this or spin this to parents to let them know that this is a pilot program? And we are hoping maybe we can make it into a full program? Because I'm a little hesitant on how many people you're going to get if it's only going to be a drop-off program and they're not going to get anything out of it.
I think it would be a great disservice to not say that this is a pilot program. I think we have to be very, very, very clear about that to everyone. And, but that's all, knowing that though is a great way to build support. If you have a group of parents who really want their kids involved in an orchestra program, and this is step one in a way of doing that, I don't think they would turn away the opportunity to have input into some sort of future.
This question is more for John and Rod. Have you looked at neighboring districts to see if perhaps, back into this, say, we could have a cooperative program with another school district in the event that we don't find enough interest to have them continue on it?
I haven't, that's a great idea, Chuck. We did ask to check what neighboring communities were doing, a little bit, you know, research. I don't know if it's so much.
We know that most school districts in that direction, to the north, do have orchestra in some fashion. And the more south you go, out into the more rural areas, it's not so common. As an aside, we've also seen school districts that do an excellent job of instituting an orchestra program into their school district, and some that have not. And we have identified two really strong models, if it gets that far. That's down the road for, in our opinion.
The parents growing into it has some pretty strong music.
Hugely.
Yes.
Yeah, every, almost everybody, not quite everybody.
Orchestra?
Yeah.
Actually, conference-wide, the only schools.
196.
196 does. One Eight Six does not have orchestra and that's half the conference. Lake Thule does not have orchestra. Farmington does not. Probably like, yeah, we, in our, in our new conference, we might be the only one if we do add it. And that's one thing from a music education standpoint, we've always kind of looked at some of those districts and said, why haven't you added? Because they're massive districts, but they just never added it.
It could be groundbreaking.
We could be the leaders.
I'm curious what general cost, I mean, to rent a flute versus rent a violin or viola? Is there... Do we have any idea what that looks like? And then is there also, is there any known underwriting vehicles or something that'll help to make sure that's accessible for kids that are interested?
The overall, in the past few years, string instruments have actually become cheaper than the wind instruments. So, I can't imagine the rental being higher than what we pay currently for the wind instruments. We could very possibly contact some of the larger music stores about helping us out, especially if we're a larger district looking at possibly adding this program. If I'm a company like Schmidt Music that can get my toe in the door, knowing that in two years, we may be adding a full program, they may be completely willing to help us out in this first year.
I think a typical, and it is rent to own for a flute or a trumpet, a clarinet is between thirty-five and forty dollars a month for over the course of three or three-and-a-half years. Some instruments, saxophones or more, but I would expect it to be in that same area. And an instruction method is seven or eight dollars.
Those weren't getting a Stratovarius.
No, no.
Currently in the band program or?
Well, this is through community ed, so.
Yeah, I think Bob talked to us recently about that community ed has some funds available. You guys would probably know that from your...
They have for sliding fee scales for, you know...
It's for participation.
ECF thing for something like this. I don't believe that there is any real vehicle.
The cost of having an instrument and the cost of participating in the program go together but are not the same thing. It would be up to a family to go out and find a violin. Now, if they don't want to do it through a music store, that's fine. If they want to go to the pawn shop or Craigslist or, you know, the newspaper, they could, you know, or Uncle John's violin's been in the attic for the last sixty years, as long as it works, you know, that works too. There are other options besides going directly to get an instrument from a music store.
Maybe we bring that up in August.
There's other ways, you know, you can go to the service clubs in the area too and look at some scholarship opportunities, I'm sure.
The nice part about a pilot is we get the pre and post results too of what exactly had them not join, what had them join in the dropout, what, you know, what kind of experience they had. I like when Eric said, these are the kids that are walking the halls and don't have another avenue to be connected. You know, one of our major mantras has been more opportunities for kids. Well, for some kids, that might be their only opportunity. And if we don't try it, we don't have any chance to see if that was one more way to hook kids into doing the right things in school. So, I'd like to see us get this off the ground, see in a year where it goes. And just like we have in other things, if it does not work, we're not making a long-term commitment. But if it does work, how exciting would it be to make a long-term commitment to this kind of thing?
Can we go a little bit further and ask about a pilot for a marching band?
That's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda. I don't see that anywhere in the...
Thanks for coming.
I know a few years back, they had like a fifth and sixth grade marching band. We just had T-shirts and marched in the Derby Day Parade.
Oh, I hate to break the bad news, but that was ten years ago. Yes, it has been.
He's been coming to here. I know the community really wants, especially to see a Derby Days and a parade, any band from the district. I hear it all the time and I think sometimes during the summer, kids have a lot of free time and they don't know what to do with it. It might be a possibility, just throwing it out there.
I think what we found is that the kids have a lot less free time than we think. A lot of them work. And that is what happened a few years ago, is it's hard to get kids to commit to it because they have jobs.
I'm talking about the junior high level starting out. To be anywhere from eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Hadn't thought about that.
We are looking at it. It's a huge chunk of the program that we're missing. And we do want to get that hole filled. But it's a very large and complicated topic.
Yes, it is. I was kind of loaded, but I just couldn't go without throwing it out.
I hear about it too. I work outside the school district in the community and...
It's mentioned to me occasionally.
So, this isn't the first time.
Yeah, this is news to us.
But it would be, isn't it, a possibility instead of going to a camp, a band, marching band camp for the summer? And it would be really great opportunity for the kids.
I think I would say that it's probably more feasible to have a pilot at the high school program rather than at the younger. And not to give a, you know, we've talked about it certainly and we've talked about it. And something extracurricular is probably more in line with what would happen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the orchestra pilot.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We get to skip again now to old business action items, seven point two, which is a kindergarten edition update and approval chain orders. Mike Brolinger in ICS.
And from ICS, we have Chris Zimmer and Scott Johnson. And Nick is from Wool Architects and he's gonna be in the background. So, I think what we'll do is we've got a PowerPoint that we'll run through and hit each of the buildings on where we're at, so. So, we're doing a construction update, carols. All right, we start with...
I can do that for you.
Yeah. We start with Sweeney because it's closest on time and at budget. We have a requested change order. You saw some change orders in the, I didn't see this one in the pack of materials. But we have three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Kitchen upgrade is the biggest one of this. That's owner scope change. Most of the change orders of the bigger size were owner requested scope change. We want to take all the partial refrigerators and mobile refrigerator, freezers out of Sweeney and give them a freezer cooler like all the rest of the buildings, like we did to Pearson when we did that. So, that was about three hundred and twenty thousand, maybe, of the three thirty-eight. When we started Sweeney, when we started putting in these footings next to the building, some of the electricity came out of the buildings and connected the air conditioning along the whole part of the building. And so, we had some electrical changes there. And then what were some of the other things? We talked about some emergency lighting and additional waterproofing. Those are kind of minor things, you know, just some areas that needed it that we thought would have been, had waterproofing. Anything else that I'm missing on this, Chris or Scott? So, and in the right-hand picture, you see the, they're putting in the, putting the ceiling tile back in this point in the current new building or where we had to run some pipe through the ceiling. And we've removed all the carpet, Sweeney will also have a, throughout the building carpet upgrade. We've had to do some minor asbestos tile removal and that's covered under the health and safety projects.
Mike, you want to share why we chose to do the owner requested with the freezer and the kitchen? Why now? What was our rationale?
Why now? We were under budget on the project and it made sense. The refrigerators and freezers are starting to show their age and they were, there's a couple of them that are rather noisy. And it was gonna be a little more energy efficient there. And seven hundred students with, the way the kitchen was configured was not working well for us. So, it's a, it's a small addition, what is it, about nine hundred?
Nine hundred square feet.
Nine hundred square feet, so.
I believe this is also the only building of the elementaries that didn't have its own freezer cooler. Was utilizing, as Mike said, the portable units. They're kind of scattered throughout there if you've ever walked through, so.
Sweeney is probably also one of the, one of the very few buildings in the district that probably felt a bit neglected. When you go into that Sweeney area, when the kids are eating, it wasn't exactly the most environmentally friendly or...
And we do have one more change order out waiting, well, I think we've got the, it approved or the pricing finally. But changing the tile, if you know what Sweeney looks like, it's a kind of a off-green, beet-green kind of glaze block. And we're gonna just put a tile with a little bit of an architectural design throughout, so.
Bringing it more up to speed like our other elementary?
Like our other elementary, sort of updating it. So, Sweeney will have a nice makeover by the time this is over.
Mike, before you leave it, so where does this three thirty-eight put us relative to our original budget? You said we were under budget, so we could afford it. Were we under that far or has this now put us over our original budget?
No, we're still well under budget.
I got a guy from the numbers.
You notice I've had issues with numbers lately. So, Eagle Creek's the next one that we're looking at here. As you can see in this picture, this was as of last Wednesday, they were working on roofing materials at Eagle Creek. About the farthest they had that we have, so that's a good thing. Not a lot of change orders in this one, carpeting, price change, brick demo, some glaze block. As you can see, just a lot of small, there were some payback, give-backs on this one as well. But net is forty-eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And so, a lot of the, again, this is kind of looking back at the building. This is a small foundation of the smaller, small group room, about fifteen students in that room is what we're expecting. And then that wall is the center wall of the kindergarten sections, looking back towards the building. So, most of the buildings are to this point where they have a center wall, stud wall on the lower level. The lower level is the ground floor where the playground is and the upper level or main level is what they're calling where the office is. Red Oak is probably, Eagle Creek again is probably right on schedule, probably a little, they might get done a little early. Red Oak would be probably next in line. Again, this is kind of looking from the west towards the entrance. The glass on the left-hand side is the cafeteria, so kind of giving you a bearing of where they are. But they were working on deck today, putting joists up, I think you said?
Yeah, steel started today there. And I know they were finishing the last of the second floor block so that they could finish steel tomorrow and decking on Wednesday.
You can see the brick has started a little bit. They have waterproofing. The brick is below the blue there, the insulation. What did I have? Oh, this, the biggest part of the change order here was carpet replacement on the main level corridor. We're getting it replaced on the lower level and was, we didn't get that in the, in the main bid. So, again, that was probably about twenty-six thousand on that thirty-eight. We have an emergency lighting change, trees, drain tile and a couple of additional display cases. Yeah, all these change orders were still well within the budget with, even with all the change orders. And again, that one on the left was early foundation work, looking back from the, back from the school. And now, that was probably two weeks ago on the right with where they were putting up the block, getting us up to joist level. Sunpath is probably running a little bit late, probably be a week late. We want them done by August fifteenth. Although here you can see that they have a lot of the block up, all the bearing walls are up and the crane is in place to put the joists and the steelwork in place. But their Metcon is in charge of Sunpath and Jackson and they haven't been able to crew up as much as we want. We're hoping they have a solution starting on Wednesday or Thursday.
Friday.
Friday is what they've talked about now.
They do have a second masonry crew coming in and they'll take over Jackson for them.
Which means Masonic Crew does the brick and the block, so. They're moving along. This one should be done August fifteenth is what we want everybody to be done. This one is probably going to be middle of the following week or August twentieth, I think, is what they've, that's what they have.
That's what they have on their, on their schedule right now today, but we are proactively working with them, aggressively working with them to get back onto schedule. We're still hoping that we're getting that to the schedule.
Working getting the roof crews in, getting things done. Again, the carpet was the big change order item, changing that main level carpet out. On all the prototype buildings, on the stairwells, we've changed to a tile. For all, for the main corridor stairwells on each end, we've put ceramic tile on there. Is that right, ceramic?
Yep.
Quarry and ceramic, I kind of get them mixed up here a little bit. But, so, then we did replace the carpet on, Sunpath's having the oldest carpet. But again, we replaced it on both corridors. Here's the crane putting the second floor in place. And then this is from the kindergarten rooms, looking back at what used to be a stairway and the hallway back into the building. So, you can kind of see what they've, what they've taken apart and the, see the, in the middle there is the iron rail for the Find Media Center up on the second floor. So, just trying to give you some perspective of where we are in these buildings. Then Jackson, furthest behind, I still believe we'll have the rooms up and running by the twenty-fifth, when teachers come back. They're scheduled to be done on a Saturday or whatever that is before, so the twenty-third. But I truly believe with them gearing up with another mason crew, you can see there are a whole floor behind on the exterior walls. And that's putting us behind, so.
Some of the top areas get on the committee.
Right, there will be a list of teams that they can volunteer to join. This will include lots and lots of our teachers. And so, if you want to be involved, you're gonna have plenty of opportunity to be involved, which I think is part of building the buy-in. Because you can't really say I didn't have a chance to get involved.
So, with this change and with your implementation, how do you see this tying into like the curriculum advisory council and their role in all of this?
So, theirs is, their role is advisory as well. So, as the curriculum-oriented proposals come in, because not all of them will be like new courses, et cetera, as those roll in in December, we'll have an early December meeting with CAC and they'll have a chance to look through all the proposals. So, we'll be looking, actually, what Rod and I have talked about is guiding coalition might take a look at them. CAC will look at them. Certainly, you'll be looking at them. And you, and then, you know, final authorization really comes from administration and the board.
So, you don't really see much of a change with how that whole process with, like, it will be pretty much the same as always?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, more similar than different, for sure.
I was just wondering if you were gonna ask for more buy-in from them on this or anything like that as you start the new year? I was just wondering if you were going to ask for more buy-in from them on this or anything like that as you start the new year off?
I'm open to ideas, but right now I kind of would see it as sort of a review and comment kind of experience. Yeah, which is what I think it's been in the past. Yeah. I will say with the areas of interest, my hope would be that we would start to get partners within the community and businesses to help us start designing curriculum. So that's another way that they'll, community will get involved.
I just want to say I am absolutely amazed at the detail that this group is going through when they come out.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, and maybe you can add a masonry course in there.
Masonry.
I think it fits under the construction.
Yeah, it's a quick study, we can use it right away.
Yes.
Okay, and obviously more details to come and details will change, but I'll have Sarah send it out to you. Like you said, a lot of this was done even on Thursday of last week, so we were kind of in the midst of kind of formatting and getting ready. Keep in mind though, it is draft, so not bad.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six point three, which is a joint school districts, we are shocked at the facilities committee update with Sean and Matt.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give a brief update and then Sean can amend or correct what I say. We've had one meeting so far with a couple counterparts from the city council, Matt Lehman and Kathy Mokel, along with Jamie Polly, Parks and Rec Director, Mark McNeil, City Administrator, and Kathy Wannahan, the Finance Director. Talking with Dr. Thompson, Dr. Weezick, John Jenke and Mike Brager as well, talking about options, what are most important to the community? How can we finance those options? It's, we've had one meeting so far, kind of establishing what we think are priorities. We are currently asking for feedback from community members, some would say begging for feedback from community members. But we're looking to share, share the load across the two government entities. I don't know, Sean, do you have anything else?
No, basically we're just looking for areas that it makes sense to collaborate and share resources. And we've only had one meeting so far. We did tour the, the community center today to see exactly what is there and what is needed. And I don't know if that would qualify as a second little meeting, but right now we're gathering information. And really, any feedback from the community would be welcome, so.
Any questions or comments or Dr. Thompson, I understand?
I don't think so. I think our purpose will be to, we have a meeting Wednesday night with our guiding coalition and our facilities group. Really excited for what could come out of some of the recommendations from that evening. There's a hands-on activity we're going to do that will talk about some shared, possible shared facilities in our community and how we prioritize that as a group. And then we'll use that as feedback and bring it back to a subcommittee that's been set up, as you mentioned earlier. And then try to keep moving forward, being progressive with things that we can do in our community to benefit everyone from, you know, birth through well into retirement, those are the kinds of things we're looking at.
Anything else? Thank you very much. And I'll go to all business action items, seven point one, which is an update and a second reading of the technology use policy, JP.
So in referencing the aforementioned need for technology in our district, in June I talked about a draft of some technology related policy that we would use to support our rollouts at both the kindergarten building, most specifically at the, at the Pearson sixth grade center where we're doing our first one-to-one rollout. So we had a lot of good feedback as part of that, that discussion. However, some feedback was specific to the policy and I just wanted to highlight the few changes I made and then hopefully get more approval to remove the watermark of draft across the document. So on the last page on the document that says digital learning student agreement, there was a note in there where we could remind, we'd highlight for parents that they could purchase insurance through the school district if they wanted for $28. And it said insurance for theft or damage can be purchased for $28. And what I did was I added, suggested a note in there, insurance for theft, accidental loss or damage. And so that, that was certainly something that would be covered in an insurance plan, and so we added that, that note in there. And then the other piece of feedback that I, that I was given that was really good was this, on the insurance plan itself, there was three options before, the choice to either decline insurance and just cover the cost of damaged or lost or whatever it might be to the device, or to, to take advantage of purchasing insurance to the district. The third option was to allow families to just cover it with their homeowner's policy. And the, the opinion that was offered was that's a bit misleading because most people's homeowners deductibles are even more than the cost of the device. So I removed that option because that would be a little bit confusing to some, some folks. And certainly don't want people to choose an option and later be surprised that that's not exactly what they thought they chose. So those are the two changes that we made. I'd certainly answer any questions if there were any related to these policies.
Any other, any comments? Otherwise I entertain a motion to approve.
Strong vote.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passed if you can take your draft off.
Thank you. No dawns on yet, next move.
Thank you, JP. We'll go to seven point three, which is approval of activity buses for the 2014-15 school year. Mr. Berlin?
Yeah, we've been trying to pull this together. We're still not quite done, but we're still within the budget parameters that we were looking at. Currently, we're still planning on two buses at each of the schools, one at 4:30, so like right after, you know, the first group of activities might be done. And then one closer to 5:30 when like major sport activities would be over. So we're still planning on that. We haven't quite decided, are we going to pick up at three different locations, meet in the middle and then send them on their way or are we going to just do separate routes? So we're still trying to work that through in the exact number of days. We're still working with the bus company on that. So it's a number of moving pieces that we're trying to pull together. Do you have prac, do you have buses on the days when they don't have practice because they're games? And, and what are game schedules? And so we're trying to pull those things together and figure those things out. Again, do we pick them up at the soccer fields or do we just pick them up at the buildings? And so just some of the finer, you know, making sure it works kind of things are what we're looking at to pull it together, so. And from an academic standpoint, I suppose, once we get the school year up and going, then we'll find out. Because this is not just for athletics and activities, it's for academics as well. So it'd be the kids who want to stay after and work with Mr. So-and-so or Ms. So-and-so.
Right, and we already have those homework help buses, sort of with, we do have some.
Very limited.
Very limited bussing, but we'll piggyback off of that so we're not sending, you know, 12 buses away at 4:30 or anything like that.
This is maybe a logistical question that obviously you're working through, but say, say a student who hadn't previously used the activity bus chooses to stay after for homework help and they live somewhere on the out. Do the, do the routes change based on who's on the bus?
It's going to have to. And that's one of the things we're trying to get a handle on is how can we, how can we get the list of kids we expect on the bus tonight to the bus company so they can adjust the routes and know that, you know, the route that's going all the way to the south end of the district is going to be, is really going all the way to the south end of the district instead of just a stone brook or in that area.
Is the student responsible for giving them their ad, address or cross street?
Usually it's not a door-to-door drop.
It's not usually a drop. It's a site, like we're going that neighborhood, we're going this neighborhood.
Okay.
On the, up in the farther reaches of the district, it might be a little different. Usually if we're going to, it won't be every, every block even necessarily, probably every couple, three blocks.
Might be at Red Oak and then maybe two other places along the carriage corridor, so.
So what learnings do we, do we have to report back on wifi and the app, app for the GPS tracking?
Right, still looking at the app for GPS. When we were looking at the wifi, we had originally budgeted about $35,000 for the operation, the Verizon bill per year and about $20,000 for the equipment, while the equipment came in a little bit higher than I anticipated. So now we have to kind of dial it back and go for the routes that are over 30 minutes. We have a lot of routes that are just short, 10, 15 minute routes, so probably not on those buses originally.
By the time you get on, you won't be able to get much done.
Right, so we're going for the 30 minute or longer routes. We're looking at the after-school routes because they should probably be 30 minutes or longer. And then we're looking at the, taking the team to Red Wing, although we don't do Red Wing anymore, Rosemount, I guess. Rosemount or Farmington would be the farthest the teams are going, so. Or to next year, the following year would be Blaine or Oak or Coon Rapids in that direction for some of our football games. But those are the kinds of longer bus rides that we're looking at, making sure we have enough equipment to provide services on those different, on those different routes. So, so once we get the wifi, Verizon uses one company that JP was talking to today and that company was?
Senovia.
Senovia. And they have the equipment that goes with the, you know, piggybacks off routing software that the bus company might have. I was talking with a person from Prior Lake and they use Zonar, which uses an independent map, independent of the routing software. So I haven't contacted them yet and we're working on that. But if we, I don't know that they have a lot of need for even the, their GPS works a little bit differently or their, their software is kind of works differently than, than having a Verizon wifi, I think, so. So depending on what we hear from Zonar, I was getting the contact information and getting a call into them. We're still looking at two different things and that's just a matter of getting the equipment in place and on the buses. And then figuring, the other thing that we need to figure out is how do we maintain the software? How do we allow people that shouldn't be looking for Johnny to have access to only Johnny? Versus, well, I can look at Johnny and Johnny's my son, but I don't have custody or I might even be on the wrong side of that. And so how do we control to make sure those things don't happen where people that aren't supposed to be finding Johnny, find Johnny? So, so we're, so there might be some policy or some administrative stuff that we have to make sure we get clear on that. But so we're still working through that. Some, some, you know, are just with passwords, Zonar might have, you know, the appropriate family member get the password and be able to track Johnny, but we're, we're still working on, on that. And it might not be all the way down to the Johnny level, it might be down to Johnny rides bus be, so that's the level, that's where the bus will be.
Situation I oppose was quite honestly more they weren't looking for Johnny, they were looking for Johnny's bus that was 10 minutes late and so it would have to stand out when it was 20 to long.
Yeah.
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 So what we're looking for tonight is we'd like to go ahead on the activity buses and we'll work within the budget to do that. And then the governance direction to work out a proposal to bring back to the board on the 25th for the wifi and, and/or the app for the bus tracking or GPS. So we could bring back, I would assume we're still within the, we wouldn't be up and running maybe by the 25th or, or if it, if it meets the board's wishes, we could actually run that through the executive committee of the, of the school board mid-August or early August if we're.
And we budgeted about the same amount, that 30 to 40 thousand a month for that.
Whatever the wishes are to the board on those three things.
How are we communicating this to parents and students that we have this or we will have this opportunity for them?
When we have it, we'll probably.
We'll roll out a communication plan with Madeline or Crystal and we'll roll that out, whether it's website, blast, back to school, you know, campus, the newspaper, the Facebook.
Maybe individual letters to bus riders.
We'll develop a, a plan.
Can you educate me quickly on what the, I know that there are safeguards in place or parameters, restrictions for accessing the internet within a school building? Will we, will those same sort of, can a, can a child on the bus access any website?
When we were visiting.
Can you already take this question, Mike?
Yeah, you did a good job with it last time.
So what, that those routers would proxy back through our network and through our traffic.
Okay.
With the district?
Okay.
And so they would be filtered the same way as if you were sitting in the library at any one of our buildings?
Excellent.
I, I see the wifi piece and I see the, the tracking piece as separate pieces and don't want them to delay a very good program. So I will make a motion to approve the activity buses for 14, 15.
Discussion? I agree, it's a, it's a great asset to have.
But come back with the plans.
Absolutely, yeah, don't lose track of those other two.
Because it truly benefits activities that are in this.
And get the communication.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Bring on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, thanks, Mike.
And last item on the agenda is nine point two, the new business action item, which is the resolution for the ninth grade to become part of the high school grade configuration. Dr. Thompson?
Sure, I'll tee that up. We've, we've spent a significant amount of time making sure that we're listening to our community and through the facilities action team, through the academic redesign team and guiding coalition, we've asked to kind of come up with some, some elements that we as a, we as a group can, can all say that we're, we're solid on. And the enrollment and the enrollment projections, we've been able to get our heads around that as a community. We've been able to look at capacity needs. And then the third one, which will affect us now and in the future, is the two pieces that will affect the secondary learning experience. And that is moving to a 6'8" middle school model and a grade nine, 12" high school model. And so what we're looking for is for a recommendation that will help our leadership, our district leadership, advance the educational programming and the facilities planning. Part of this plan, as some of our neighbors and colleagues have done, is to ask for approval for that secondary configuration for future planning and learning experience. We don't necessarily know when that is because it is based on our community and the ability to get our referendum passed. But it does allow us to plan and it allows us to be better at the facilities end of it. So looking for formal action to approve that the secondary grade configuration for the future secondary learning experience to be grade six to eight middle schools and grade nine to 12 high schools as presented. And I would note that that is high school or high schools because we have not had any formal recommendations from the facilities task force, which is in their charge to counsel, nor have we heard that from our guiding coalition group.
All right, then, Mike. Second?
Any discussion? I think there's only like three, four large high school, district of large high schools in the state that have a senior high and a junior high right now. And I think they are all moving, I mean, the process is moving to a 912 to meet the state requirements.
And maybe this is just a matter of semantics, but one, I think we've done this already once before when we accepted the last task force's report recommendation. When we accepted that recommendation, it was to move toward a 912 and a 6'8" configuration at some point in the future. And I still believe that that's the action we should be taking is to accept that recommendation and not to approve a recommendation. Because the approval sounds like now we, we are committing ourselves and we're going to move forward to that. And I believe we are doing that, but we do it by accepting the recommendation and when it's feasible to do it, that's when we do it and make that approval of building a 912 or building a 6'8" building. So to me it might just be semantics, but I'm having a hard time reconciling that.
Can I, can I?
Sure.
Go ahead, man.
So check what helps the...
So, um, Chuck, what helps the, from a programming point of view is for us to know that that's what we're working towards. Change is what we can talk about with implementation teams, even though we might not know physically when it's going to happen. If we know what happens, then we can start designing programming that assumes that. So it is helpful even starting in the fall, even if we're not exactly sure when the bricks and mortars are going to be there from an academic program point of view.
I also think we've asked our committees, the nearly 200 people, to hit the reset button. And part of maybe this reset is, is that in, with full, full integrity, full honesty, that when we said reset, we truly meant you don't forget the experiences of the past, what you learned from them. And, um, with, with formal approval, as Nancy mentioned, it probably helps put an end to speculation of how serious we, we were, how serious we are. And it sets a path. For our secondary teachers, for example, it's pretty clear when the board approves, if the board would approve this, that they will be planning for, for the middle school model and a nine, 12, which is a significant change over what we've currently been planning for. So even if we intended to take that action at some point in the past, I don't think our mindset right now is that, is that we are planning for a nine, 12 redesign or a six, eight redesign. I think it's, I think there's a lot of hope and wishful thinking, but maybe it's more, more formality and assurance to our people that, yes, we've, we've made it. We've, we finally are at a place that our academic team says this is where we have to be to get the most out of our students. So it might be some semantics, semantics for those of us who've been around, those of you who've been around longer. But for those of us who are newbies, um, it's, it's powerful. It's, it's powerful language. It's hopeful language. It's, um, it points to where we're headed, not where we've been. And I think that's important after the referendum.
Peace, I would just add to that. When you're in our tick committees and, and teams, you know, I don't want us to get bogged down into, well, we can't do that with sixth grade because they're not at the junior high or they're not in a middle school. We can't add that course for ninth grade because they're not at the high school. You know what I mean? And that will be some of the discussions if we don't have, I think, a pretty direct, you know, recommendation saying this is where we're going. We may not exactly be able to say when, but, you know, I, hopefully even by the fall, we'll start to see where the facilities task force is going and that'll help the design of the academic program even more. But that would be my concern.
Chuck, I think this goes one step beyond accepting the recommendation. I think this is acting on the recommendation that we receive from the facilities task force. That's how I view it. Is, it's one thing to accept recommendations, but you usually, some of whom you don't act upon. This is acting upon the recommendations. That's how I see it. Is it a resolution? Do we need a voicemail or do you, does voice port, Sarah?
I think voice port. I, I don't see a voicemail unless you feel a bit too like.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
We'll go to item 10, Superintendent Apple.
Just, uh, quickly, if you look at the back to school week that's in front of you, the first item I wanted to share with you is there, first of all, this is what it looks like. And then to check your interest, there is a 7:30 to 9 o'clock breakfast. Would, would members of the board be interested in, in kind of manning a meet and greet table or a welcoming table? Where if staff want to ask you questions, if they want to talk to you about your opinions on things, would there be interest of even a couple, three of you to, to man that, uh, that station? And if there's more of you, then we just post it that a quorum of the board may be present. So can I, can I just kind of get an idea of those that might be interested?
Got to see the date first.
Yeah.
Eight twenty-eight.
Hold up. Right. Okay. So there is at least a quorum that has shown some interest. So, uh, Sarah, if you would mind posting that as a quorum of the board may be present. And then we'll give you more information on that, that, uh, that's a half-day event. In the past, it's been a full day if we've had afternoon activities, uh, set by the district, but we don't here. One thing I would point out, the 10 o'clock keynote speaker, Patrick Briggs, comes, comes to us through the Avid program. Real terrific story there. If you Google him and look him up on YouTube or whatever, there's some real wonderful things. And then don't forget, that's also the day we hand out tenure and the legacy awards and all those types of things. So it's a very, very, uh, powerful, powerful morning if, if you could, uh, make that work. And then secondly, uh, because we have events starting actually shortly, it seems like, we're working with the ticket tracker system that, um, allows our students to enter the, you know, the F4 activities, the, the, in our district. And, um, over the next month, I'll be sending you an update. There's a lengthy, uh, list of what the ticket tracker system does for us. But basically, we'll have an interim way of allowing kids before the pictures and the barcodes come on, there'll be some kind of a ticketing system that we'll advertise with parents and so forth that get them into the game. But then I'm really excited to find out, once we have the, the scanners up to date, you know, how we can keep track of, you know, Rain Thompson is, yeah, I show up at the game and I want to know if Rain's at the ballgame. And with the ticket, with the scanner system, we'll be able to say, yeah, she's here at the ballgame because she scanned in. She's, she's here. And so the way, well, some of the questions about, you know, school safety, security, um, financial, um, school spirit, who's, what, you know, who's attending, there's a lot of real, um, positive other things that are associated with the software. And, uh, I don't know enough good things about it to share them all. But once I do, uh, we'll kick that out and then we'll let you know our system for, uh, back to school. I would also mention there's, uh, last thing I have is an opportunity on our first home football game on the 28th. And I guess I know the Gophers are playing that night, but we also have a home football game. If you are interested, the district will, is planning on setting up a, uh, meet and greet table and kind of a, uh, what you might call it, a welcome back, um, for students and kind of advertising that, you know, the school spirit, we're in a new conference, um, you know, doing some of the, I guess, positive PR that you can with getting students and families to, to attend the game. And, uh, besides the Gophers, I'm sure you've, you've noticed too that we had a, a, a facilities meeting that night and those are being, uh, rearranged just as the other one on, uh, one of our derby days had to be rearranged. So those were the two things, Mary, that I had. Any questions?
No questions?
Questions on that?
No, I was going to point out the action team meeting.
When you say to be rescheduled, we, those will be rescheduled.
Yeah, Sarah's going to work with the board to get those recent, to find out what your availability is because it'd be easy to reschedule or to set some dates. But I know almost all of you have been at every event that we held, uh, for these meetings. And we want to make sure that if we all of a sudden pop a date on there and you can't make it and it happens to be the night we're doing an important activity and you can't be there, it didn't feel very good to just do it. So we're going to work with you to try and make sure you're available.
If we have a home game, I imagine the 28th will work for a number of people there.
Yeah.
Right.
And because we're talking about facilities, a lot of the people who have a vested interest in that evening are going to be there.
Yep.
We have some options for you all ready that we can share later tonight.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. We'll go to, uh, committee updates. Nothing? Well, I'm busy going to all of our strategic presentations. Informations and others? Anything? Charles?
No.
Scott? Matt?
Nope. I had the opportunity to go to a community Hispanic graduation party. We had a, a record number of Hispanic students who graduated this year, which was a great achievement. And there were nine, uh, students there. The party was catered by Cub. And I'd like to thank Paul Breitner for not only attending, but giving us a wonderful, wonderful food and a really good deal on that food. And Mary Hernandez, who worked to organize it. And, um, Lou Stelmo, uh, church, also brought some fantastic rice and beans that they made themselves. But it was a chance, and Dr. Bezek was there as well. It was a real chance to congratulate these students and to tell them, you know, hey, you can set the example. You did it. We can, other kids in your position can do it, which is what we talked about earlier with the achievement gap with our Hispanic students, getting them to graduate. It's a very important milestone that sets up their future rather than not have their diploma and get lost in the system. So it was a really fun time. We even had piñatas and, and Mexican or Hispanic music. And it was over at Lions Park and it was just a really wonderful event. And I, I hope we can expand it to include other groups as well as, as they reach some great milestones.
Anything you want to add about that?
You know, it was just, uh, it was a real nice event. And one of the things I told the kids was I hope they had a good experience in our schools. And, you know, they think about coming back and, you know, working in our community and teaching in our schools to use our own models of, of attack the achievement gap. So it was a good event. And the student that actually just graduated from the O V, that popped up and thanked community members for all the support. And the local churches helped them out and the people that were there helped them also. So it got very nice of them.
And, and I've asked Mary to talk to the students and ask them, what did the district do right? And what did the, what can we improve on to help more Hispanic students graduate? So I'm anxious to get the feedback from that. Under upcoming meetings and important dates, July 16th, the guiding coalition meeting, I believe, is changed to seven.
Guiding coalition went to seven.
To seven.
Action team remains at seven.
And the action team meeting remains the same on, on July 16th. We reschedule on July 31st. Let's see, August 12th is another guiding coalition meeting from six to nine. And then August 25th is a board business meeting at 6:00 P.M. And you mentioned before, August 28th, gaming football game versus Apple Valley at 7:00 P.M. And I think I've known that far as far.